I would like to reconvene and call the meeting of U46 back to order. And I'd like to see if there's any visitors or staff to be heard. Seeing none, and would like to go right into our principals' reports.
We're only five minutes behind the agenda.
See if we can catch up some time. Not to rush, but always provide your time. So, would you like to start, Bob?
Sure, just define your terms of five minutes. So, my report is an update on CTE's action plan priorities for this year. Not knowing.
No, I'm only five minutes behind.
Oh, okay. I thought you said five minutes.
At first I was like over 15 minutes behind, but with no visitors, now we're only five.
Not knowing whether I would have access to technology, just printed off the PowerPoint presentation. This was a good activity for me because the end of my academic year during in-service, at the end of the year, I spend time with my staff reviewing our administrative priorities that come directly from our action plan. And we basically give ourselves a report card of what did we say were our priorities going into the year? How did we perform? And it gives us a chance to say, what are our priorities for next year?
Bob, can I just ask that you forward this as a PDF to Ben?
I will, yeah. I've got it digitally right now. So, I want to scrub it a little bit just because I went quickly and I just wanted to make sure that it's not.
I know, the colors are really nice.
Yeah, those are, we've been playing in the sandbox for CTE colors and our internal and external communications.
You do good.
Thanks. So, on the first page, you'll see that there are five action plan statements that come right off our action plans. They focus on a prepared student for college and other forms of post-secondary, increased percentage of students ready by the end of year for teacher program for careers. The climate point, CTE will enrich the campus experience for students through the expansion and development of activities that provide students with positive and healthy options. CTE will continue to improve practices related to gender equity and diversity. And CTE will continue to ensure collaborative voice in decision-making for students and staff. And in my report, what I did as I went through, instead of reporting hard numbers at this point, I reported actions. It's hard to come up with hard numbers at this point in a current tech ed center because a lot of our data, which you will see later, is reported by teachers next week that goes to the state for its state reporting system. So, I was able to glean some numbers, but it's not hard and fast. So, for instance, under post-secondary, you'll see that 52% of our students are reporting plans for college next year. Or post-secondary, so what we define as, sorry, post-secondary would be defined as a college or some kind of a career certificate program such as the state-led apprenticeship program. So, that's 81 of our seniors, and I think it's a really solid number. Increased use of local assessments, the Star Reader and math. We continue to employ local assessments and those Star Reader and Star Math assessments. We've seen them now used in push-in services for underperforming programs where I've dedicated math and English teachers to go in and work with students in double-dosing. We see it in our pre-tech program in which we're assessing all students as they come through. Following the presentations tonight, we are working with a teacher to put that person on an additional duty contract this summer to input all of our data that you wouldn't typically see in a high school. So, our industry-recognized credentials, our state assessment data, along with Star Reader, Star Math, and local assessments. So, hopefully, we'll be able to pull that off this summer. As part of our professional development program, we had Amy Cole lead a one-credit course on formative and summative assessment, and 16 of our staff members completed that for credit this year. I mentioned pre-tech instruction. I mentioned the push-in services for reading at Building Trades and Natural Resources. Those are typically the poorest performing programs at our center for reading and for math. So, we've dedicated and created instruction time to identify students in need and push into those programs and work with teachers. You've heard a number of times that we've successfully pulled off the S-PAC. At this point, I think it comes down to one student who timed out. Everybody else took all of the exams, and one student was on a medical waiver. She could not take that exam. As part of our preparation to be more data-conscious, we had an admin teacher team take the Harvard University Data Wise course online. That's informing our PD plans for this summer, and it will help us next year to work on MTSS because data collection and data decision is one of the benchmarks for MTSS. And you see that we completed our MTSS survey this year. And in addition to data teams, we're looking at establishing small education support teams around the center. Students who are career-ready. So, you know that we've been in the process of working with the state to develop third-party valid and reliable assessments for all of our program areas. I think we're about three-quarters of the way through now. Administrators have been working with those programs because there's an adoption period where the teachers have a blueprint, but they're not quite sure of the full curriculum that statewide assessment represents. So, that poses some challenges that we need to get over. An example of that is four years ago, Pro Foods was one of the early adopters of this assessment. We had a pass rate of like 25 or 30%. Pro Foods in its fourth year, in its third year last year, reported a 92% pass rate. So, it's that, working with the teachers to understand the curriculum and also their teaching practices with their teams. That's where we're working right now with all of the new adopters of assessments as they come along. We released teachers from five different programs this year to work directly with the Agency of Education and GSX, which is the psychometric company out of Washington, DC that's designing these programs. We purchased the Chrome Labs for Pro Foods and for Building Trades to make sure students are learning in an environment for an online test, which the assessments are. I think that has helped a lot. An early read on the reports from GSX as these students are taking the assessments is that better than 80% of our students have passed the state assessments. I'm still waiting on data for a couple of programs that were just building them into their curriculum towards the end of the semester so that they could keep their students engaged because they were building the grades into their local grade. Trying to create some interest by the students to do a good job. So, enriching the campus experience for students. What I chose to do there is list what I think is a really impressive number of activities that were led by our student council. As in the last couple of years, student council has been responsible for three center-wide assemblies this year. Opened with what we call T-shirt Day now, which is a, you've chosen CTE, now choose success, and what does that look like? In which we bring back alumni from different years who have been successful to address the students about what it takes to choose success. Middle of the year, we had the National Guard Bring Your A-Game to School BMX presentation, which was really positive, very exciting, especially for those who sat on the ramps underneath the flipping bikes. And third quarter, we had Colin Ryan, who's a local comedian, come in and do an anti-bullying presentation. Student Appreciation Day, this year we did a bone marrow match enrollment activity that was led by our health-related programs along with Essex High School's Red Cross Club. It was a really successful event, and it hit close to home because one of our teachers' husband is suffering from bone cancer. So, the match was also, it was meant to try to find that gentleman a match as well. Fundraisers for the Mid-Pal earthquake, Spirit Week, multiple food fundraisers around the holidays, penny wars to fund their activities. We were part of a national text talk and ACT activities on Crash. I rolled in the equity piece on this page, too. We completed our gender equity professional development course. We're not doing that next year. Better than 80% of our staff have completed that for graduate credits. It is now the period in which those things are showing up as staff work. So, we've all taken the same course. As an example of one of the staff works, I'll just pass these around. You'll see these around the building. They actually will show up in beautiful matted-and-framed posters.
They're awesome.
Huge posters. I'll have them at recognition night. This was my project as part of the program. I wanted to do an internal campaign, a communications campaign, about how this center is open for all and what students think about access. So, these are students from our programs this year, and we grabbed quotes, and we had, this is graphic design's work. So, they're nice in this form. They're really impressive in the large poster forms, the framed and matted posters. So, that's an example of how we're doing, we're trying to do internal communications To wrap up the equity piece, CTE completed a national alliance for partnership and equity grant-funded study called STEM Equity Pipeline. That more recorded our efforts than gave us a chance to think about activities. The result of that is CTE has been asked to sit on the statewide leadership team for gender equity that meets regularly at the state level. So, we'll continue to participate at that level. And I mentioned it in the past meeting, Carolyn Dickinson is going to a national conference held by our comprehensive school climate survey company that provided us the climate survey tool, and she's presenting on how CTE uses an appreciative inquiry model to engage students in devising action steps around how they reported climate in the school. So, I'm sure she'll be happy to report on that over the summer. Collaborative voice in decision-making. We continue with our core planning team for the AI Summit. We're participating in that. We completed the NEAS five-year focus visit. It was a resounding success. We used the MTSS survey as an opportunity to engage a group of staff, and we use those findings to help design the professional development program going forward. Our Data Wise course, as I pointed out, our advisory groups are still very active, and that's the list of the groups that meet regularly. We dedicate a meeting a month in our staff meeting for staff just to get together in these groups and work on their action plans. And the last thing is, I didn't put it on here, but the use of our student council to inform positive and healthy school efforts. There's actually a subgroup of our student council called the Empowered Students Committee. They are the ones that chose to plan and manage all of those activities. They have a regular connection to the administrative team, and we often ask them to come into staff and report what they're working on as part of the student council. So, those are the outcomes and efforts, and I'll report more in terms of numbers of IRCs, number of dual enrollment credits as we get the data back from the state.
That's really impressive.
Thanks.
Are there any questions on this material or previous materials I've brought? Rob?
So, I'll start off with the school climate survey. So, in terms of the 32 different items that are evaluated, we trended positive and 22, 10 were neutral. That's about the same as the spend the previous two years, mostly positive, a few neutral, no negative. The one that kept cropping up from the student perspective, sense of social emotional security and the specificity to that is the sense that students feel safe from verbal abuse, teasing, and exclusion. And in talking with other administrators at the high school, to even be more specific than that, it seems like that's taken on more of an electronic component where with the access of smartphones and other devices, you can text, tweet, post, et cetera, et cetera, 24/7. And, you know, that's concerning, and we think that's where most of the angst and where that has trended neutral all through years, but that seems to be one of the lower performers. So, perhaps involving students in student government and other associations next year to look at some targeted action steps that we could take with student input. Because that's one of the results that we received. Again, that seems to be the one that at least is on my radar moving forward. In terms of other presentations that you saw tonight, in terms of the S-PAC, we had strong attendance. I think we had a total of 24 students who, when all was said and done at the end of the four test dates, which was April 6th, April 8th, April 13th, April 15th, missed one of the four components or maybe two. So, we've been in makeup mode, and that continues, including this week, for students to get the remaining components taken as a makeup. The additional challenge in this format as compared to Science NECAP, which we also had May 11th, and the makeups were given right after that, is you don't need the technology component. You also, for English Language Arts and Mathematics, one of those days for each involved a performance task. So, basically, there's some instruction given in the classroom, and then the students have to respond to the instruction. So, when you're preparing makeups, it's a bit more involved when you have those components. So, those are just some of the things that we're realizing this year. Last year with Pilot, we really didn't give makeups for that. At the high school level, it still continues to be a challenge, and I think a little bit even more so for our students in terms of the English Language Arts and Mathematics moving from an October window to an April window, followed quickly by the Science NECAP test early in May, and also two weeks of fairly intense advanced placement testing. It's like testing onslaught for students. So, there continues to be a concern from the student perspective, and how much energy do they have to give their best in all of these environments? So, you know, more to come, I'm sure, as we get more feedback from students, we'll look to improve it over time. In terms of the admin and form, I thought one of the interesting pieces that was presented tonight was the data points or the metrics. Some states have gone to five or six indicators. I think Rhode Island has one, a state that really had poor overall performance issues. Many schools were taken over, and as a result, all high schools in Rhode Island have identified and prescribed metrics that would cue or trigger a student to be looked at by EST or a team that's out to provide support. So, that's a good development that our team has taken on, not necessarily just picking those five or six items, but looking at what key metrics could be so that when we get students from our multiple sending schools where we don't get data from them electronically, we can be more proactive rather than reactive. So, a student could be triggered with grades that are okay, but because they're triggering these identified metrics, they'd be on the lookout of the EST team. So, I see that as very, very positive moving forward. Multi-tiered system of supports. I thought Mark asked a really good question in the larger group in terms of the behavioral and social emotional component, because current brain research will tell you if a student is really overwhelmed with an emotional situation, i.e. being texted continually about, you name it, that at the cellular level, they're not able to be ready to learn. The chemicals, reactions in the brain, synapses, et cetera, et cetera. Students are not able to be in a classroom and learn. So, I thought that was a very good question on his part, and a good point as we move forward, is certainly the academic, but the social and emotional well-being, which ties back into the climate survey, where the kids are saying that. So, I think that's really important to move forward with. We had a wonderful performance, not performance, but evening on Otter's Night, May 26th, where we had about an hour and 40 minutes of wonderful achievements in all content areas by our students. Great community turnout. On May 28th, we had the Academy of Visual Performing and Art capstone projects where students presented for about two hours in the auditorium. Very well-received. June 3rd, we had the science, technology, engineering, and math students present their projects here in the library. Aaron, thank you for attending. Just a wonderful night to showcase the tremendous skill and motivation that any of our students have in the STEM field. The following night was the community internship, once again here in the library, from 6:00 to 8:00, once again, and students were reporting out on all their experiential learning opportunities that they chose this year and how they connect the content skills with the transferable skills to tie that into the quality standards. Many students making reference to time management, you know, proper attire, proper language, going to Plan B when Plan A doesn't work, and fitting within a timeframe. Very impressive to hear the students perform as they reference their experience. In terms of following up, in terms of action plan items, we've got certainly proficiency-based learning, personalization of learning with PLPs, to name just a few. And I told you I would provide you a copy of a book that we'll be reading this summer. So, that's what I'll do at this point.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
If you spare time, Mr. Travers? Basically, with the staff where we're at, which is one of the items that are actively played by June, all curriculum math from all teachers will be completed. We're going to be looking at that work on June 15th, which is next Monday, in terms of in-service time. And from the curriculum math, what we can then determine is what are the essential learnings or proficiencies in each content area as we move from the math to getting specific in terms of math. So, for example, in math right now, in terms of graduation requirements, and you'll be hearing a lot more of that next school year, we have three credits, three cognitive credits. But where we're going to look to move to youngness, the difficult conversation, is what are our students going to be able to no longer stand and do and perhaps apply in different contexts in terms of mathematical skills? So, that's a whole lot more comprehensive than three credits. These three credits could be everything from free algebra to B.C. D.L. So, it's going to be a real interesting conversation. This particular book with Guskey, we had some teachers and administrators go to Houston and look at assessment and how, I'll just be real simple in this, how some, when grades are configured, would factor in homework completion and class participation, and how the wide range of those percentages may be throughout the building. And one would say that moving forward, what we would want to do, those things are very important in terms of homework, getting things in on deadlines, and being an active participant. Those should be recorded out separately, and you should actually report out on the skills that you're able to know, understand, and do in mathematics. So, that's a whole different mindset for many of our staff, and perhaps any of us, and any members of our community, and some of our students moving forward. So, it's an interesting conversation that we've been having through in-service and will continue to have in-service, and this book will provide a common base of knowledge and understanding as we kick things off in August. Recognizing we're going to have about 14 new staff members next fall with varying ranges of experiences and backgrounds based on our retirements that we have coming forward. So, this is, I think, really important work that we'll be rolling our sleeves up as we continue down in terms of the proficiency-based learning road. Personalized learning plans, we're ready to roll with the Naviance through the VSEC approach that just about every high school that I know is going to be using, interesting to know. We're going to start out with our freshmen in the fall, but dual enrollment students, juniors and seniors, that kicks out July 1st. So, we'll be starting in earnest. Don't ask me how right now, but I'll be doing all students what we're working on at the end of July 1st, ready to go. I'll have more comment in a minute on the rest of our action plan, but it's pretty much more of the same, we just rolled it out. We really look to, or I really look to expand and give students more personal choice in terms of independent study options and independent study applications. So, I have an excellent example tonight of a student who chose this fall to do an independent study in social studies. And the deliverable that this student had, we had that one today, Neil Pidgeon, was a book, In Terms of Unexpected Heroes, in terms of history, US history. So, what I'll do is I'll just let you peruse this. I've got it outstanding and fascinating. Julie, I'm sure you recognize the name. And just a job well done. So, you have a teacher, a writer, in this case, Mr. Jason Webster, and the student who meet, and basically, there are some agreed-on things. Just by the paper, a lot far enough away. Still, thank you, Mr. Travers, for being able to insist. That's had help. So, basically, in terms of the independent study, obviously, there's agreement in terms of contract, beginning and end dates, detailed timeline, check-in points, at least one by each quarter or four quarters. And also, the proficiencies and standards addressed as we go forward. So, we're getting that language in, what the student will understand and do, and we're separating the timeline piece from it. And the products, which can include project, test, quiz, exam, research paper, portfolio, presentation, or a book, and the resources needed, and it's signed up upon, goes to the school counselor, check-in points occur, and then the deliverable. And we're looking to do this more and more because I can just tell you, a sheer joy when I got with a student today in terms of she presenting that book, she was just so jazzed and excited, and she traveled all up and down the East Coast to take pictures. And, you know, it's a social studies project, but as you look through it, there's some pretty good photography going on there, and obviously, there's some good English skills in terms of captions that she's writing and summaries that are included. So, as we move forward to next year, one of the more popular places to start with independent study is physical education, opportunities for students in lieu of a traditional phys-ed class, which would follow a similar process. My point is, I would not want any independent study to look any different. It shouldn't matter whether you're at physical education, social studies, mathematics, whatever. The independent studies have the same application and contract and process to go through. And then some of the proposal questions, which ties into PLPs, how does this credit flexibility relate to my high school goals, future academic goals, and occupational goals? So, that's a question they have to answer as they're writing up their draft. Secondly, what skills do I need to demonstrate to be successful in this project? Really make them think about what they're going to be doing for a whole year or a semester. And then finally, what skills will you develop in order to demonstrate mastery of proficiencies addressed in independent study? So, we've had another student a few years ago who was coming up with chronic line disease, and it makes sense for a sharp department, one of our science teachers, Professor in Plasberg, and she did a genetics research paper which ended up being published. So, this is not just about physical education. This is about a lot of other stuff that I think, based upon what we're moving towards. This is another example of students having voice and choice in their learning. And once you get a chance to peruse it, I think you could agree that this student did a fine job. a fine job with this particular project. And I know you haven't had a chance through the contract and everything, but just her enthusiasm today was, you know, one of those feel-good moments on a dreary Monday morning. So independent studies, you'll hear more about them when we get the form completely refined and updated, I'll certainly share it maybe even August or September. But I really want to see students have that opportunity as we move forward. And lastly, because I know we want to catch up on our five minutes. Or not? In terms of the, in terms of the action plan, as I mentioned, the personalization of learning, PLPs, multi-tiered system of supports, already talked about. The only other thing, in terms of the teacher leadership model, just as an update, we had hoped to have a agreed upon new model for the start of August 2015, but we couldn't get agreement in terms of a newer model moving forward. So the task force with input from faculty was very content to use this year's transitional model into next year because we've gained some good traction moving forward. So the committee is still meeting, we just met last week, and we're going to meet again on August 11th is our next meeting date, as we move forward and look to take the feedback that we received in March to get the conversation going again early. March, we felt it was a little too late because we're starting to build a schedule, and we didn't want to have anything in terms of throwing a monkey wrench in the student's schedule, so. But other than that, everything is progressing as we would hope to see in terms of the timeline, in terms of, as I think Judy or Amy indicated, there's never a dull moment. We're chugging along, we've got some identified outcomes. But I did want you to have a book for the summer.
Thank you.
So that's my report. But I, I thought the board would appreciate, I knew you'd appreciate that.
Thank you. I think, you know, if I could just comment that, you know, tonight we saw numbers and graphs portraying student progress, and it's great to have that data system in place, and it's important. And yet, at the same time, I really appreciate what Rob is underscoring tonight. Like Aaron and I, we're looking at some of the projects from the STEM Academy that blow your socks off about how kids are taking their skills and applying them to their passions. And the power of that, you can see it in the book that was written as well. I think as we're asking students to demonstrate their learning in new and different ways, we have to be open in our, in the way we talk about student growth and progress to triangulate not only data, but actual artifacts that they create or internships that people have come back to the school and thanked the students for their contributions. And, you know, I, I think not losing sight of the whole student, the whole child in the process is going to be really important. Because sometimes when you have data, you start to hone in on a, on a skill or very specific content skill, when you have to remember that you might not always get every one of those skills, which is what I was trying to say earlier. We all needed supports and scaffolding along the way with different subjects. I mean, anybody who said they didn't need any support along the way didn't take any risk and, and learn things that were, were challenging for them. So that was the basis of engaging in that MTSS framework. And, you know, I just really appreciated Rob mentioning AVPA capstones and STEM capstone and the internship. And those are all positions that you, as a board, have resourced. And I, I think not only the data system will give you that information, but to always look and see, and hopefully, we'll get dates out enough in advance. So there's nothing like firsthand experience, and maybe Aaron might want to comment on that, but to actually see a student who's so jazzed about pathology and plasma and things that you don't really wrap your head around until you see how that connection happened and the difference that it's making in a 11th grader or a 12th grader's life, or for many of us, we didn't have that opportunity until we were in college. And I think Leanne Smith said something so powerful that night, which was, they might even learn that that isn't what they're interested in, and that's just as important before they engage in a track of study that costs lots of money and isn't quite the match. So thanks, Rob, for highlighting the, the stories behind the data.
And one other thing just to add before I kind of sign off on the report was, in terms of other investments that we've chosen to make and you've supported, thank you, the plan test, the PSAT test, plan test for sophomores, the PSAT test for juniors in October, and also the Learn to Earn activity that our, our sophomores are taking. It was interesting to know in the, the class of 2012 updated report that we've exceeded, you know, the state average in terms of the first generation students going to college. And I attribute, I do attribute that in a significant part to those activities, in particular, being offered during the school day, not on the weekend, of course, the kids can opt out, and also for paying for those assessments and not having to have the embarrassment of not being able to afford it. And those, you know, at budget time, I know there's a million line items, but don't lose sight on the significance of that based on at least the data of the class of 2012, because that really showed that up front and center.
Equity.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, you know, that idea of inclination and inspiration of achievement and potential is found right in Gusky.
Yeah.
So are there any questions for the principal's report or Rob?
I was, I was just, oh, go ahead. I was just going to quickly add the numbers that Rob gave me the night of the STEM, which I thought were really amazing when we talk about, you know, some of the resources that we've allocated and discussions that we've had, which was that STEM started at four, and then it was at 48. Tell me if I'm wrong, Rob. And then your planning, it looks like it could be close to 90 next year. So that's a pretty, that's pretty exponential growth, and it sounds like a lot of it is the kids actually really talking about it amongst themselves. So the kid, the buzz with the kids about STEM Academy, and it was pretty amazing to see. So that's, I mean, it's huge growth, so, yeah.
At the STEM board meeting, every quarter with our critical business partners, and, you know, they're, they're as excited as the students that participated in those organizational meetings, and they're very thankful that, you know, we're a high school that's drawn the line to the sand and said, you know, this type of opportunity is really important for our students and our community because they, they really feel that there's a need and we're, we're stepping up to the plate even before you view undeclared an interest in this area. So that's something that, once again, thank you for your support.
Yeah, no, I was going to reiterate also, it's great to see these kind of deliverables right from the students that, you know, it's synthesis, right? It's getting up to that highest level of blooms that is just really where we would hope everything goes, right? Just goes, hopefully, the quantitative assessments, you know, show that they're building the skills that lead them up to, to be ready to deliver these, some of those assessments. And so it's fantastic they're able to bring these kind of deliverables forward, so hopefully we continue that. And then one question I saw in the climate survey, Essex High School is one of the few that had a, an increased participation across the three different groups. Was there any reason for that? Did you, did you try to increase participation in the climate survey at all in some way? Or did you do anything special?
Well, a little story of that, the second, the second year of the assessment, or the survey, I should say, it was, it wasn't, the numbers were really poor. So this year, we had a concerted effort, and during our advisory, which is every Wednesday, and there was one Wednesday open in the window of the climate survey, so we made it a point that every student in advisory would take the climate survey. It was a great idea until the system crashed because of too many people getting on at once. So it, it doesn't do justice to our numbers. Yeah, we increased, but really, it could have been much higher than the system, you know, just because of a massive onslaught. But there was more, there was more, I think, I attribute a lot of that to what IT did. I mean, there was pop-up notices whenever you were on the website, and that was great because it reminded everybody, parents, staff members, and students, oh, yeah, if you haven't taken it, this is your opportunity. So that was a really good job that Vince Canello and company did for everybody.
Nice.
Is there any update on the advisory?
At our last meeting, you talked about having some additional conversations. Is there anything at this point in time to share with the board?
Nothing formal at this point. Conversations continuing. It's, it's MTSS related in terms of looking at a, at a way to, to get, you know, supports more intentional during the school day, but that's, it's still a work in progress. You know, I'm confident it's going to happen at some point, so I'm, I'm always an optimist, and I'm very confident, and we're working hard to make sure that that'll come about.
Is that confidence flow over to a creation of a leadership model with the teachers?
Uh, I don't, well, in this case, I don't think they're, one is directly related to the other.
Yeah, I was just looking for you to use your confidence. Where's your confidence level on that issue?
On the leadership model?
Yeah.
Um, well, we, we had a model that we presented, and then when we presented it to the current CCLs and the task team, there were, how can I put this? There were more questions than anticipated. So not that anyone was negative about it, but there were a lot of questions. So by the time the task team had a chance to meet again, which was now creeping into March, we felt if anything were to go forward, it would have been really rushed without answers to the questions that were given. So hence, the, the next question was, would we be comfortable for another year of a transitional model, which this year was? And definitely, a majority said, yeah, we can go another year and continue the conversation. There were a few that were disappointed, but I think it would have caused more angst than created a sense of well-being if we kind of ramrodded something down at the last minute because of the questions that were generated, generated by the current CCLs.
Yeah. So do I understand that we'll, but you, you announced tonight that we're, we're going to continue in another, for another school year?
Yes, with the model we've had this year, which has been, I would say, successful.
Yeah, and one that's getting tasks identified within the action plan realized.
Right.
So I think that was the big takeaway, that the team said, well, this model, this transition model we've put in place is really helping us do the work that we've said is most important to do. So I, I was actually encouraged that they moved forward with the structure that was best supporting them, and that's what you want a teacher leadership model to be. So I think it helped position us for PLPs, helped position us with proficiency-based learning, and for the work with the climate. So, you know, I think it's a model that's in play, and I think the teachers will have another year to say, oh, we could tweak it this way or that way to see if it'll continue to, to meet the needs of the schools. But there's certainly has been more buy-in and support for teacher leadership.
And is there more voice?
I think so. I think that, yeah, I think that they have wed together those gaps that were in the proposed structure originally.
It, it's a, it's an interesting combination in terms of the task team that meets in terms of recent leaders and department chairs, or the old, older leadership structure. And there is a intentional focus to take, I'll say, an appreciative inquiry approach where they're not, they're not looking to bash either, they're looking to take the strengths of both combined with the ASOP system that teacher leave has now replaced people having to call at five and six in the morning over and over again, which nobody I knew liked that role. And also the Sun Guard financial piece in terms of purchase orders and moving towards an individual who coordinates that, and the teacher leaders don't have to physically enter all that like they used to do. So keeping in mind those two significant bodies of work and trying to focus more on leadership for teachers, not just management, we're making progress on that.
Good.
I'll just ask a unique question. Could someone just explain what the origins of this educational leadership model are and what perhaps came before it or what it replaced?
There was a department head model, which has probably been in existence for sixty, seventy, you figure the number of years. And then there was a change to curriculum content leaders, which basically, for the content area, teacher leaders were involved in curriculum instruction and assessment for that area, but not necessarily any of the managerial tasks that may have used to be done by some of the department heads. And then there were four learning community leaders where we tried to go, we tried to structure ourselves organizationally in terms of learning communities. So math, science, technology, engineering was one learning community, and there were four total. So feedback on that was two things. One, four, four leaders were not enough, the majority felt, based upon the number of teachers. It was fine if you were in the content area of one of the LCLs. And then the curriculum content leaders, they did an excellent job with the curriculum instruction and assessment. There were some gaps that the old department heads used to do, in some cases, although there was not uniformity in terms of the execution of that, that they, they felt that there were gaps there. There also were created an academy, a visual and performing arts leader, and also a STEM leader, to ensure that these two pathways get up and running with fidelity, which they have, and they continue to be. And in both cases, with a new model going forward, there has been a, a strong feeling that these positions should continue to ensure that the pathways are strong. And I think if you attend the Capstone night or the STEM night, you can see that they are very, you know, robust in their, in their offerings and their breadth and depth of learning. So hence, when it came time for the learning community leaders to apply again after a three-year interval, there weren't enough, there wasn't enough interest, shall we say, for those positions to be filled. So therefore, it triggered a, a meeting, or many meetings, and it was decided that for this current year, there would be a transition model. And that's where we got, we kept the CCLs because those were deemed very positive. Also involved vertical teaming, working with ADL, Fleming, and Iowa and Summit. And also, as Judy mentioned, you know, the, every teacher, 127 teachers, had rightly so input in the action plan, and how did we get all the tasks achieved that were based on the NEAS report, ad quality standards, et cetera. So that's where we had teachers who were interested, skilled, and wanted to help lead, involved in personal learning plans, proficiency-based learning, and reporting, and some of the other items that you see in multi-tiered system of supports. And that's where we are.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Rob.
Yep.
I am going to move into the next agenda topic and ask if there's any questions, rather than going into our three task teams. Communications was updated, I believe, during the RED study group. Policy was sort of updated in the process in which we needed to kind of move to get here. And I think the leaders at work has been focusing on the comprehensive Chittenden Central Supervisory Union's Action Plan, AWP Action Work Plan. So are there any questions with regards to the task teams? All that information's available, minutes, and everything is available through the board website. Appreciative Inquiry Summit, I'm, I'm pleased that the group, the advisory team group, so there's an advisory team group that has been working over the last year, that is comprised of board members and administrators, and then there's the core planning team, which is comprised of stakeholders of the U46 Chittenden and Center for Technology, kind of critical friends group. The advisory team met and, I believe, made a, made a decision for the right purposes, but it, but in some ways, personally, it's always kind of that disappointing decision. We had planned the appreciative inquiry summit to occur in June, and as we started to kind of, it was one of those things, it's like, well, that's next month, and then realizing it was like the 28th of May, and that's, it doesn't become next month anymore, it's next week. So as we looked at it, June is a very difficult time to compete against either existing events, family vacations, work, students' work, teacher availability, everything under the sun. And we just didn't feel like we'd have the participation that would make the investment really have the return that we wanted. So we decided to move it out to November 6th and 7th, so it'll be in the fall. It will be a, a full day and a half, it will be a Friday, you know, over into a Saturday morning, and we'll be able to accomplish all that we had planned in that June 24th and 25th time period. But I think it will be a little bit more friendly to work schedules, a little bit more friendly to our constituency, and I think- And I think instead of trying to compete against the onslaught of communication and assessments and events and final nights and presentation nights and everything else that happens at sort of the last six weeks of school, that we'll be able to have a more of a lead-in and a more planful time to get the best attendance there. So, more will come. We'll have a, a sort of a re-energizing, reconvening of the core planning team in the fall. And we will proceed with what I'm sure is going to be a really engaging day and a half looking at the vision of the Union 46 School District, particularly leveraging the, the strengths of our, of our two schools to maximize learning. So, that is the update. Is there any other value to add to that? So, Planning Day, this, the Planning Day comes down to that some of the original schedules of follow-up from the appreciative inquiry had me really concerned about my original concept of embedding Planning Day into kind of an extended meeting time period in September. You'll recall, we don't have a September regular meeting as a school board, but I thought we could kind of use that placeholder that we might have, that third Monday of September and be able to get an, an extended time period so that we might start a little bit towards the late afternoon, have a meal together, run our agenda, kind of get out at a reasonable time period. I think the new schedule for November 6th and 7th with the appreciative inquiry now plays back to that making some sense. How does that feel to the board, the idea of the third Monday in September, late afternoon to evening? It would be.
21st.
It would be the 21st. Of September.
That sounds good.
Yeah. So, I think that there's some time. I'm happy to work with anybody that's interested in it and kind of pull it together. I'd like it to be, you know, a learning moment for us. I certainly want to talk about our emphasis and what we wanted to as far as a board with engaging our public. I do ask that everyone complete the board survey as well. That's a survey done by all board members and Judy. This will give us, I think we're probably up to, close to five to six years of longitudinal data on that same survey tool, so that's kind of nice to have. It's, the link is in your org notes. We have an August board meeting. It's a carousel, isn't it?
Sure.
Well, at, at the August board meeting, we'll have an agenda topic to look at sort of a proposed draft agenda for the Planning Day and we'll have a chance to make some refinements and finalize that before we go. And we'll probably produce something of a, a retreat or I'll, I'll work to try to create some type of like retreat packet that will come out to the board members the, the week beforehand. So, hopefully, again, we'll, we'll kind of use that basis where if there are items for us to learn, that we learn them outside of the retreat so we can use the retreat for more in-depth discussion and reflection.
What time are you thinking this would be?
I'm thinking something like, like a four to eight, three to eight kind of thing.
And you are, do you have any topics in mind at this point or is it still just?
None. The only thing I know I want to make sure is in there is a chance to review the survey results. Besides that, the, the world is, is ours to design.
I just had a quick question about the new dates for the appreciative inquiry summit. Liz, that save the date, like postcard that was emailable that you did, is there any way that you could just update the dates on it? Because I'm thinking that I, I'd like to start sending that out to people. What the heck, get it on people's calendar. Even, like, I think even if just, just we, just start circulating it to kind of the people that we know in the community that might be interested or, you know, have input, want to participate, it couldn't hurt to, to start getting it on people's calendars, I'm thinking.
I think for, for a select group of people, I think it, it's good. For any kind of mass thing, it would.
Right, not, not for the masses.
But for people that, I mean, the core planning team.
Right.
Other key stakeholders, those kinds of things. I mean, I would think that in earnest, where we don't want to start too much of a mass, even save the date until mid-September.
Yeah.
But, I mean, certainly, you know, the core planning team could use a reminder like, paste this into your calendar so that we don't run into vacations or other things that, we had a number of core planning team members that couldn't make.
Couldn't come.
Yeah, the summit, so.
And our bringing them in team has some work to do around messaging and creating materials around that will happen also close to the fall, but I see no reason why we can't change the dates on that.
Yeah.
PDF that we created. I, I think, I think we'll do, I think we haven't worn out our welcome. We paid our bills. It's the, it's just changing that small information and the RSVP information would just come off of there until the fall.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't see why we couldn't, couldn't do that.
That would be great.
And we don't have a location yet, though, but we do have some leads, so that's good.
Good. Again, you know, interrupt me if I'm moving too fast, but I'm considering going into the consent agenda.
Yes.
People comfortable with that?
Yes.
So, I believe the consent agenda had some additional items that were added to it over the last day.
For hires?
For hires.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have those?
I do.
Great.
I have paper, if anybody needs paper of those, if you didn't see it.
Anybody need the paper of that? No?
No, okay.
So, I'm going to explain the items on the consent agenda. If anybody wants something pulled, feel free to ask. And again, Liz, the motion gets to be pretty much what's included in our organizational notes.
Yeah.
So, we have the approved warrants, which is routine, approved meeting minutes from the May 18th, 2015 meeting. Those were attached. Recommendation for professional appointments. I think in total, we're going to have.
Five.
One, two, three. Yes, I think there's five total professional appointments. And then we have the tax anticipation note bid approval, which is routine and recommended. It would be a tax anticipation note for 3.5 million while, while the taxes are forthcoming for the district to continue operation. And then approval of a letter of retirement. And that's been submitted by Trina Bianchi. So, you have all the names, Liz?
I do.
You're good?
Yeah.
So, will you make that motion?
Sure. Oops. Okay, so, I'm, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes approving warrants, approving meeting minutes from May 18th, 2015, approving the recommendations for professional hire from Heather Finlayson, Sonia Vinegas, Dawn Vining, Lauren Moore and Hill Laban, to approve the tax anticipation note bid and the approval of the letter of retirement.
And the tax anticipation note bid is by Merchant's Bank.
And the amount?
It's 3.5 million.
By Merchant's Bank and the amount of 3.5 million.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions, passes. Future agenda topics, again, please, I, I think those are, I'd prefer them because here I take the notes and then it's a matter of like trying to create them electronically afterwards. So, if there's a query or question, learning that you would like to see happen as a board member about the, about the two schools, about the overall programs that are happening, please forward those on to myself and Judy. Again, always feel free, if there's something that you feel you need to communicate to me as just the chair, feel free to do that. And is there any other business for the, that we need to take up tonight? No?
I do have a question. So, I think at the last meeting, we'd mentioned either doing like a review of the, the legislation and its potential effects. Is that some, a potential topic for the next meeting, which is in August, or is there a separate kind of forum to which we'll kind of analyze that and present out to the?
Yeah, there's, there's been a couple of forums that have been pulled together. The, the information from the BSBA and also the VSA, the, both the summary as well as the detailed kind of rundown of what's happened is super informative.
Yeah.
And I think that what we did in last year was in budget guidance, so that can give you a kind of a base.
Yeah.
Anything that pops up, we can put on the agenda topic as a discrete item, but in the fall, when we start to look at budget guidance, I'd like to, again, invite our legislators in at that time because we really talk about some of the constraints and pressures and requirements that we have as we try to design the budget.
Yeah.
And that seems to have a connection to the legislature in a lot of ways when we talk about constraints and challenges. So, we would get a little bit more in-depth there. There was quite a bit, certainly one of the great pieces of news that I don't think anybody had their eye on was that dual enrollment is 100% paid by the state for the next two years.
Yeah, that's great.
There's absolute silence about what happens in year three. But.
That's okay.
That's okay. So, that's great news. We, we had budgeted to absorb the 50% and then had anticipated 100% of that cost going in, so that's great news. So, sometimes things pop up even at the last minute.
Yeah.
I think when we begin budget season this year, which probably will be in August, I think Grant will provide an opportunity for us to understand the restraints and the allowable growth cap that we're going to face and the implications of that. So, Brian's spot on as far as, you know, the, what pieces of the legislation that will affect us the most will be talked about specifically under different topics like budget.
Great. Anything else? Then I will move to adjourn. Thank you.